Okay, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting in order. This meeting is being held in council chambers which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not for participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Before I have roll call, I do have a note that Councilman Shaw is running a little bit late. He had a couple of clients to meet with. Can I have roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
President.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Okay, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have one item for closed session. It's conference of the legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.91. The name of the case is Gregory Gross versus Uba City at All. Uba City Superior Court Case Number CVC S22-5016.
Thank you, City Attorney. Do we have any comments from the public? Seeing none, we will adjourn to the center room. Okay, we're gonna... Thank you. Remember bringing this meeting to order? Welcome. This meeting is being held in the city council chambers which are open for public attendance and participation. The meeting will also be livestreamed for public viewing but not participation at the link identified in the agenda. Email comments sent and received by the city clerk at least 24 hours before the meeting were distributed to the city council prior to the meeting. Before we have roll call, I would like to mention that Councilmember Shaw is running a little bit late because of clients he had to work with. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Kirchner.
President.
Vice Mayor Harris. Councilmember Boomgarden.
Here.
Councilmember Pescuali.
Here.
Councilmember Shaw.
Thank you for that. We will have the invocation by Chaplain Dave Kokoman? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Well done.
Thank you. And we will have the pledge of allegiance by Officer Andre at the conclusion of that. Will you please stand?
Lord, your word says, "Blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord, the people he chose for his inheritance." We also know that the same is true, that blessed is the city, the county, the community, whose God is the Lord. I'm thankful that we have a local government who recognizes the significance of calling out to you, God, for wisdom and guidance. Your word also says that when the godly reign authority, the people rejoice. So I pray that you would draw each and every one of our council members closer to you. We give thanks for these political leaders who have chosen to serve. We pray that the spirit of the Lord will rest upon them. And we trust you will give each of them skillful and godly wisdom to make decisions that are always in the best interest of our community and those they're called to serve. And I do pray you would protect them and their families and those relationships that are most precious to each and every one of them. Bless them, keep them safe, and I ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, City Attorney's report on closed session items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was no reportable action taken in closed session.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Agenda modifications slash approval of agenda.
Through the mayor?
Yes.
I would like to suggest that we consider moving item 14 to in front of the consent calendar. After presentations, please.
All right, moving forward. Ceremonial presentations. Number one, I'd like to invite Cherie Stevens of Stevens Farmhouse to come forward, please. And will the city council join us up front? I think so.
Hi there.
This is the fun stuff right here. This is... Thank you so much for coming up here. I think... Well, if you haven't met Cherie and/or Jeff before, you know that both of them are very much involved in our community. I know that when I heard that you were going into retirement essentially, I think there was a panic on social media. Oh, my God, Stevens Farmhouse is closing. And of course, that's not the case, and we're glad for that. And the other thing, if you've ever driven down 99 at around Thanksgiving, or Christmas for that matter, you've seen the line. So, and you've got some supporters out there, it looks like. Wow. Okay. Okay, so whereas Cherie Stevens is retiring and selling Stevens Farmhouse after 21 years of service to the Uba Center community, and whereas in 2001, the farmhouse business was purchased from Lee and David Johnson where they decided to retire Johnson's farm after 25 years of business, and whereas Cherie, a wife and mother of three, gave up teaching and committed her time to the farmhouse, and whereas Stevens Farmhouse is a unique specialty store that offers delicious pies and other tasty goodies, jams, cookies, and also dog treats. Didn't know that. Everything is made from scratch and locally owned, a grown fruit. During the holiday sessions, they often crank out 3,000 pies a week, and the number continues to grow every year. And whereas they expanded the business to include wholesale jams, catering, and various fundraising opportunities, not only are they famously known in the Uba Center area, they also sell their products in Tahoe and Yosemite, because I've seen them there. And whereas Cherie is married to Jeff Stevens...
Iron Man.
Oh, man. Who founded the community organization Say Love. That sounds familiar. She's also a member of Seroprimis International of Marysville, Uba City, and...
Are we tired of her?
Oh, boy. Okay. Whereas in 2013, Stevens Farmhouse was awarded the Small Business of the Year by the Uba Center Chamber of Commerce. Stevens Farmhouse contributes and donates to almost every nonprofit and service organization throughout the Uba Center community. And I believe that, because most of the fundraisers I've been to, I've seen your stuff. We congratulate Cherie for her hard work, longtime commitment to the small businesses, and that she is selling the business instead of closing the doors. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the City of Uba City, on behalf of the entire city council of the City of Uba City, do hereby honor Cherie Stevens and commend her 21-year farmhouse career and many contributions to this Uba Center community, and wish her much success and happiness in her well-deserved retirement. Let's give her a hand. Would you like to say something?
Sure. It's a bittersweet moment. I'm ready. Physically, I'm ready. Mentally, I'm ready to take on a new chapter. I have a daughter here that was at labor and delivery last night and is ready to give birth, but she's refusing to come. So that'll give us four grandchildren. That's a new chapter that we're wanting to be able to take more time with. I'll tell you that about the third year that we had the business, Jeff and I were overwhelmed. We were... The learning curve was extremely high, and we sat down and we made a list of pros and cons as to why we should keep the business or sell it at three years. And we had a whole list of cons, of, you know, from labor to just the amount of time, how much it was taking from our family. And over on this one column of pros was Jeff liked to be able to give a pie or a cookie And that's why we kept the business. So, you know, I am extremely grateful to our community. So this last holiday season, from Thanksgiving to Christmas, we made about 9,000 pies. And those pies are not because people drive by on Highway 99 and go, oh, I think we ought to stop there. The pies are cookies and items that we sold over all those years was because of our community. And we are 100% supported by this community. So we thank you. I thank the past employees who have come out tonight and to just be here for support, and my other friends and family that have come here tonight. So we're excited. We're ready for that next thing.
Well, thank you. Let's give her another hand, please. And as a token of our appreciation, we'd like to present this to you.
All right. Thank you so much.
9,000 pies. Phew. Okay, I'd like to invite Marnie Sanders from the Uba Center Chamber of Commerce up. I don't know if you're gonna have any room left on your wall for this, are you? For those of you who don't know who Marnie Sanders is, she's been forced to be reckoned with in our community. She's been our CEO of Chamber of Commerce for a number of years. How many years was it?
Five.
Okay. Yeah, and done an exceptional job. So thank you. You've done more for this community than a lot of people have, so thank you for that. There's a fan right there. Okay. Whereas in 2018, the Uba Center Chamber of Commerce appointed Marnie Sanders as the chief executive officer, and after five years of dedicated community service through the Chamber of Commerce, she has accepted a new leadership role as the executive director for Blue Zones Project Uba Center. And whereas in a short time at the Uba Center Chamber, Marnie's governance and ambition have increased the membership to over 500 members. Whereas Marnie's networking and direct approach helped build the relationships and businesses in the community and serves as a key driver of the local economy, economic prosperity. And whereas her leadership at the Chamber has created a strong local business community which creates jobs and opportunities for residents of Uba Center and the Uba Center region. And whereas you can find... You can always find Marnie at the Uba Center Chamber of Commerce events such as the Business Connection breakfasts, ribbon cuttings. I can attest to that. Yeah, just a few of them. Lunch mob networking, business after hours, new member orientations, rise and shine, candidate forums, business education, Taste of Uba Center, lunch and learn. Wow, it keeps going on. Wind Down Wednesdays, and the gala, and all the milestone events, and... Whereas Marnie has proven her loyalty and dedication to the community and has successfully... Has been successful at the Uba Center Chamber of Commerce for the last several years. Her dedication led business organization to strengthen the relationships throughout the Uba Center business community, helping our community thrive. That's the truth. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Wade Kirchner, Mayor of the City of Uba City, and on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim and acknowledge Marnie Sanders on her outstanding leadership at the Chamber of Commerce, and also congratulate Marnie on her new chapter at the Blue Zones Project Uba Center. Let's give her a hand.
Well, you know, I think my time at the Chamber was just a profound time in my life. I was able to grow and learn so much from so many others in the community. And I think, you know, our Chamber is only as strong as the people who are part of the Chamber of Commerce. And I would be remiss if I weren't to thank Jackie Lee, who's been with the Chamber for 12-plus years, and she is just an anchor at the Chamber of Commerce, and then our newest member, Kristin Perry, who has now stepped in as the executive director of the Chamber. And then, of course, we have board here and our ambassadors and the business community and everybody who has stepped up to support our community. And again, we're just as strong as the people who are part of the Chamber of Commerce. And so you just made my job easy, really. So thank you to everybody.
We would like to present Marnie with the token of our appreciation.
You know how this goes. Hold on. Oh, there. Okay. Should I do the rock and roll thing? Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Drawing the flag. There you go. Keep it up. There you go.
Race Communications Presentation presented by Jim Miller, Vice President of Sales and Marketing, and Samantha Cook, Events Community Coordinator.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Thank you for having us here tonight, and definitely it was amazing to watch that presentation that you guys just had, two amazing ladies and pillars of the community. We definitely hope to achieve that same type of status as we enter into your community as a new business. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Race Communications. We are a CELEC in California, and what that means, we are a licensed phone company operating throughout the state since the 1990s. Tonight, we're just gonna go over a quick presentation on who we are, some of our products, our construction processes, and then any contact information that people have concerning questions during the construction phase. So Race was founded in 1994. We're a San Francisco-based company. We have operations that extend from San Diego all the way up through the Central Valley and then on the eastern seers as well. And we became a licensed CELEC, which is a phone carrier, in the early 2000s. So we own fiber networks throughout the state and are in the process of building out additional cities like yourself here in Uba City. Our philosophy is that whether you live in a large city or in a rural city, or a city of almost 30,000 like Uba City, you should be able to have appropriate and quality internet and phone services. And so with the fiber optics that we're bringing to the town, it's a product that is gonna offer something brand-new to your community, and that is services up to 10 gigabits. That is symmetrical speeds. That's typically 10 times faster than what your current providers are able to offer. And it's also you will be one of our second cities in the state to have that service, and not just for Race to offer that service, but the second citywide project in the state of California. So it definitely is a very exciting product to bring to your community. In addition, Race also offers traditional video service, so television service, and phone services. Something that obviously is of interest to everybody is where are we gonna build? So Race is building the entire city limits of Uba City. And what we're looking at here on the map in this green area up in the top-left, that is our first area that will be starting this year. So the entire project takes 18 to 24 months to complete, and the initial project for this year is estimated to be about 10,000 homes turned up by the end of this year. Key activities. So we kicked this off in 2021, working with your staff, who've been amazing. As a CELEC, we're a licensed utility, so we're able to operate in the public utility easements. But different than other CELECs in the state, we like to come in and talk with staff and work with staff to be able to alter our plans to the needs of the city so that we're unique and not burdens on the city staff. And so with that, we've been able to refine our engineering processes to the likings of your city. And then we started turning in the permits in the beginning of this year and have construction that just started here, I believe, a month ago. About a month ago, we started with our underground construction phase. The project has kicked off. One of the big questions that we have during construction is we follow the traditional methods of deployment, meaning that if the power company is overhead, we'll be overhead on those same poles. If the power is underground, then we'll follow the underground methods. Underground obviously takes a little bit longer than building overhead, so we start that phase of the project first, and that's what you probably see around town in the green area that was back on this... There we go. I messed it up already. Sorry. I thought if I went left, it would go backwards. Sorry, guys. But in the green area is where we're starting the underground, and I wanted to take a second to explain some of the construction process and how it works. So as a CELEC in California, we're required to build to a state standard. And in California, that's called the general order 95 for overhead and 128 for underground. So everything that we're doing out in the streets is not how Race does it. It's a state standard of what the state dictates. And with that, I wanted to explain our construction process. So a lot of questions and concerns can come up during that. We'll be placing vaults that are either in the sidewalk, or if the right-of-way is going to what's called the green belt behind the sidewalk, then we'll place it into the grass area. When they're placed in the sidewalk, sometimes questions will come up is, hey, you cut my sidewalk, you placed a vault in there, and then now there's black asphalt instead of concrete in there. That's what's called a temporary patch. So as you build through in a project of this size, we can't have a concrete truck come out for one 4x4 vault area. So they build a street out, and as that street gets built out, they temporarily repair it with that cold patch, which the guys can carry on their truck. And then as that street's completed, then a concrete service comes out to complete the final repairs so that it matches the rest of the sidewalks and driveways and so forth. From there, we go into the aerial construction. The aerial construction in backyard easements, that comes up a lot. Questions of, these gentlemen want in our backyard? Can they go in our backyard? Race is a licensed utility company, so with that, we are licensed to enter into people's backyards, just like a PG&E would be or an AT&amp;T is. And so our... All of our employees will have badges on them to identify themselves as a utility worker. We also will door-tag houses that were coming through their neighborhood to let them know that we're gonna be having construction on those streets. And then the day of, they will knock on the door as well to let them know. If they're not home, they'll door-tag the house. As long as no dogs are in the backyard, they will enter into the backyard to get to the pole access line. How do we notify people? Like I just said, the door hangers is one way. We also work with cities that wanna do mailers, so if you guys have billing that goes on on a monthly basis and you want us to notify certain neighborhoods, we can create extra mailers to go into those billing packages to notify neighborhoods in advance. We have construction crews on the street that foremans are out talking with the neighbors as well, and then my marketing team is also out on the streets, answering any questions that may arise. When questions do come up, we direct people to our website to fill out construction questions. And the reason this is important, they can either do this or they can call in, is we track everything. So once a customer fills out a assistant form here, they will get a unique number sent to them, and that ticket number then tracks until we resolve that question. So sometimes the question could be, as I mentioned, about the asphalt. It could be mentioned about the aerial lines going in their backyard. Any of that type of stuff would be identified here. They're able to upload photos. So if they have photos of something that they don't approve of, they can put that in here as well, and then our team back in our office can assess that, give them a call, and get it corrected. And that is it. I just wanted to make it a short introduction. I didn't wanna make it a salesy pitch tonight. I just wanted to introduce our company and address any kind of concerns that might be coming up on the construction phase.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from council?
Yes, through the mayor.
Thank you for coming out and sharing the information with us. The area you're in is... Happens to be the district I represent, so I have received a few calls. Nothing too hostile. From the time that someone contacts you with the assistance form, what's your expected turnaround for them to get something back from you in the way of an answer?
So the moment they enter in, it goes into our customer service center, and it could be same day or next day that they'll be calling. Now, to resolution, all depends on the nature of the problem.
Okay. You mentioned that if there were dogs in the backyard, you wouldn't go in. If someone doesn't have the ability to, you know, during the day they're at work and that's where their dogs are, then what happens?
We've never had it where they were never able to go in. They... Our foreman will make contact with those neighbors or with those homes and make arrangements for the dogs to be out the following day so that we can re-enter the yard.
The one thing that I would respectfully continue to request is as much outreach before you get there as you possibly can. It sounds like you've got, you know, several avenues of doing that, but that was perhaps the one thing that I've gotten feedback on is I didn't know they were coming. And believe me, I understand, you know, some people don't... They probably see a door hanger or it blows off or what have you. I get all that. But if you could just keep that in mind, I would really... We would really appreciate it.
Absolutely. The feedback that we get, and that's why I said we're different than other utilities. We like to come in, introduce ourselves, and work with your staff. The feedback we got from William was that actually right there, and so we're changing things up to where not only are we, if you're not home, putting the tag on your door and entering in, but by law, we're allowed to enter in as a utility company, but we want to be courteous as well. And so we're tagging the door, but we're also having signs made now so that we can actually put it in your driveway, because a lot of people don't enter their front doors anymore. And so we don't want them to, hey, there's a stranger in my backyard. So we're actually putting street signs out in front of their driveway as well, so when they pull in, if we're in the backyard, they know that there's a Race employee working in the backyard.
Thank you.
Any further comments from council?
I do have one more.
Sure.
After the area you're in, what's the next geographical area you're planning on expanding into?
I don't have all the plans. I do have Dominic, our VP of Construction, here with me tonight, and I'm gonna put him on the spot. It is a... So unlike building a house where you go down and you get one building permit, when we're building a system that's citywide like this, permits come in at various times, and they all have a time allotment that they have to be... The work has to be completed in. So there's a little bit of a song and dance as the permits come in. I can tell you that our central office is right off the Highway 99 there and by the Ford dealership area. And so that is the area that we're expanding out of. And so that is the area that we're expanding out of initially. And then from there, as permits start flowing in, they're usually adjacent. So adjacent to that green area in the top left will be the next area. But as we start getting closer within a 90-day timeframe, you'll see more of the sections identified and then information on when that section's going to be released. So I know I didn't give you a direct answer on there, but it, it, construction is one of those things that we are trying to get to market as fast as possible because we know there's a need. It's just, we've learned that if we say we're building out Zone 1, Zone 2, Zone 3, and the permits come in for Zone 5 and we skip to that, sometime people get upset because they don't understand why we skipped.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any further questions from council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
On a, on a presentation? No. Public communications, number four. Appearance of interested citizens. You are welcome and encouraged to participate in the, in this meeting. Public comment is taken on action items appearing on a consent calendar or business items on the agenda when they are called. Public comment on any other items within the scope of the city's jurisdiction, including items not listed on the agenda, will be considered at this time. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. Members of the public submitting written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be allotted five minutes to comment per speaker. Repetitive comments may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select representatives to express their opinions of the group. Do we have any comments from the public? State your name and address, please.
Name is Thomas Burns. Address 1885 Green Gate Street, Yuba City. I am concerned about that system that just went, that was just presented and was curious if there's any wifi related to that system, what gigahertz they're operating at and how safe it is for the public. Okay, so that is my comment on that. And I'm basically here to talk about this taxing the people more and more and more.
Through the mayor, if I may. If this is related to Agenda Item 14, that's actually going to be the next item. So that item actually appears on the agenda. So if you could reserve, I, I, I mean.
This is public comment.
But this is a matter already on the agenda. That's, that's the thing. So if you could speak to any items that aren't on the agenda, you can speak to those. So just wanted to flag that for them.
Not yet though, right?
Correct.
Not yet?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so then I'll say, when it comes to government, and I've been watching government for quite a while, local, national, international, and I'm really getting fed up with what I see. And I'll, I'll kind of sum it up in this little statement here. If you're in East Palestine, Ohio, the government says the water's fine to drink, so drink up.
Okay, any further public comments? Any further public comments? Okay, seen none. We're going to move forward to Agenda Item 14. Ms. Diana Langley.
Good evening, mayor and council. So if you will indulge me, there's, there's quite a more, few more people in the audience tonight that weren't at the last meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and give the presentation that I gave at the last meeting. So the item before you tonight is a professional services agreement with Smart Marketing and Public Affairs for revenue measure consulting services. And just for some background, beginning in 2019, the city council designated a budget ad hoc that consisted of two council members that worked with staff on an annual basis to review the, the budget, the proposed budget. And as part of that, they looked at the operating budget, personnel changes, capital acquisition, the capital improvement program. And this was early on in the budget development process, where as staff, my time is up. That's okay. Yeah. Where as staff submitted requests, the ad hoc members would review those requests. They'd also review the expenditures for, the projected expenditures for the fiscal year and then also revenue projections. And, you know, they've now been doing it for a few years. They've really gone through that process of making sure that expenses are being accounted for to not only the correct account, but they can also be justified. And, and also through that process, we've now had four of the current council members participate. And so they have a strong awareness of the budget. And I'm sure at some point in time, Councilmember Pasquali will have the opportunity to participate as well. Also for background, in December of this last year, city council designated Vice Mayor Harris and Councilmember Boomgarden to participate on a revenue ad hoc committee. And so during the month of January, we had two meetings in which the revenue ad hoc met with the directors and myself. And we reviewed the city's five-year fiscal outlook, public safety priorities, road conditions, and discussed creating a citizen ad hoc committee to provide input to the revenue ad hoc. Now with the citizen ad hoc, you know, the intent is to really get the feedback from this group in terms of the direction that the city's going. And I noted at the last meeting, at the beginning, we're in the very, very early stages of discussion with this. And I'll get into a question and answer slide in just a few minutes. But, you know, it was important to the revenue ad hoc to, at the beginning, also get the citizens involved in this process. So for additional background, the city's revenues are not projected to be sufficient to maintain fiscal sustainability, address public safety priorities, and improve the poor road conditions throughout the city. At the last meeting, I noted in 2019, we did a transportation workshop in which we looked at the current, at the time, the condition of the roadways. At that point in time, to maintain the roadways in their current condition, it was about $7.3 million. To improve the condition to the lower side of good, it was about $8 million annually. If you fast forward to today, with the, having years of drought and then substantial rain and not very much road maintenance, with the majority of funds going to major projects, such as the current Bridge Street widening project, that price tag has increased tremendously to where the cost to maintain the current condition is approximately $13 million. And then to improve it to the state average, which is considered fair, would be about $20 million per year. And that's not just for a few years. That extends out for many years. And just the dollar doesn't go as far as it used to in terms of maintenance. And as your roads continue to decline, the cost for maintenance continues to increase. So it's better to do preventative maintenance than have to do rehabilitation or complete reconstruction. At the time of the, this initial meeting, we discussed opportunities to generate additional revenues. And I, and I want to clear up some confusion. There was a comment about cannabis sales at the last council meeting. The reference to that was a previous workshop that council held when there was an applicant that was asking the city council to consider to allow cannabis sales within the city. There was a large outpouring of the public that attended the workshop. The overwhelming response to council from the people that participated was there was not interest to allow cannabis sales within the city. And so at this point in time, that's not a point of discussion with the revenue ad hoc. We did look at, you know, opportunities for, there are other, there are other ways to generate revenues. You can do parcel tax. You can do utility user tax. You can increase your TOT. You can increase your fees. You can reduce your expenditures, all of those things. A lot of those things require the same process as a revenue measure. And so at this point in time, the revenue ad hoc recommends approaching a potential revenue measure in a very methodical, meticulous approach and provide opportunities for the public to provide input throughout that process. And with that, I'm going to stop to see if either member of the revenue ad hoc would like to make any comments related to where we're at today before I get into my next slide. Not to put you on the spot or anything.
No, not at all. No, it's not really anything additional what you've already said. And other than I wanted to assure folks that are listening in, in the room and online and in the future, that a lot of thought, a lot of discussion took place regarding this. It's, it's not something we take lightly. We weighed many options. We definitely have heard folks when they say, what the heck is up with our roads? Roads, 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 homeless issues, public safety. But it's a lot of it comes back to roads. I know before we began work on Bridge Street, that Bridge Street rattled teeth out of your head if you go there between, you know, Gray and Cooper. So we are looking for a way to come to the table and put forth some action behind those comments because we hear you. But as our city manager said, it is not cheap. Prices are going through the roof pretty much as we speak. And we need to get on top of it, and that takes money. So for that, I prefer really, Mr. Boomgarden?
The only thing I would add to the comments I made in the previous meeting was that, you know, the subject of, of taxation in the time when there's a lot going on with inflation and other, other taxation issues was one that was given quite a bit of thought. And, you know, at the end of the day, the, the good thing that I believe is here is that the public gets a chance to select or make a choice. It's not us up here as a body of five telling you you're going to end up paying more taxes. All we can do is, is, is take a look at what we've done over the last four years with the budget, know that there is a need that I think Diana will be talking about in the future. Prepare for that need because there's some stuff that's going on right now that's, that's a need. We hear that a lot. I certainly heard it when I was going door to door in the last campaign. And so for us, you know, we're, again, I just want to reiterate, we're not imposing a tax on anybody. We are going to go through this process. And if at the end of the day, it's decided that a revenue measure should go before the voters for their choice, then so be it. If, if not, then not. But at the end of the day, the people get to choose. We don't get to impose.
All right, thank you. And I'd just like to note, a 1% revenue measure today would be approximately $14.5 million. And if a measure were approved in November 2024, which is the election that we're looking at, the city would not see a full year of revenue until fiscal year '25, '26. And so that's, you know, two years from today. So staff obtained a proposal from Smart Marketing and Public Affairs of Yuba City to provide revenue measure consulting services. The proposal's broken down into four phases, which are shown up here. And you can see the timeframe spans from March, which we're now into March. So that would be modified a little bit, March through August of 2024. The term of agreement would be 18 months and commence upon execution of the agreement and shall continue until the scope of work is complete or until the city opts not to pursue a November 2024 revenue measure or until either party suspends the performance of the services or terminates the agreement, giving 15 days prior written notice. So at the last meeting on February 21st, there were five individuals that spoke against awarding a contract to Smart Marketing. And the primary sentiment was that the city should go through a request for proposals process, and I'll address that in just a moment, and that the city should be working with Sutter County and the City of Live Oak on a county-wide revenue measure. At the meeting, there were three council members in attendance, and there was not a majority vote to proceed with awarding a contract to Smart Marketing. And so the item was deferred to this meeting. All right, so here are some questions. At the last meeting, we went through kind of a, a question and response session with council. Three of the four council members responded to these questions at the last meeting. I, I leave it up to you. Just please interrupt me as I go through this if you want to interject anything more. But I'll go down the line. So why didn't staff follow bidding process for these services? And so, you know, I just want to start out that the, we have complied with our purchasing requirements. And so the city's municipal code does allow for exemptions from competitive bidding, and it specifically states for professional services, which this is a professional services contract. And then also, many candidates in both the city and county have utilized local professionals for election-related and marketing activities, including Smart Marketing and Public Affairs, who's, they're well-known in the area. Smart Marketing guided Yuba County with their Measure K, which was challenged and prevailed, and they were successful. And they're also familiar with the local community. They also have experience helping a local agency with a revenue measure, which was a successful revenue measure. Since the, the last meeting, there have been discussions about, you know, what Sutter County did, what Yuba County did. Did they issue an RFP? Did they award directly to their consultant? It's my understanding that they directly awarded to their consultants, and they did not issue an RFP. Setting that aside, what was important to this council and what we've heard numerous times is related to transparency. And so with this contract, the city manager has the authority to award up to $100,000 without bringing it before council. We could have proceeded with some of the phases of this, had it start, go underway, be well through the process before it became public knowledge. That is not the direction that the revenue ad hoc wanted to go. That is not the direction that staff wanted to go. You know, we wanted to be front and center in terms of this is what we're doing. You know, the revenue ad hoc, council wants public input. And we have a means through our purchasing policy to be able to award directly. And we have a consultant that has a track record of being successful with revenue measure within our community. Is there a conflict of interest between council members and Smart Marketing? I'm going to again, direct this question to the city attorney.
Thank you, Diana. Under the facts presented here, there is no legal conflict of interest. The reason for that is, is merely if a council member and some of these council members here have previously used the services of Smart Marketing. However, they did not receive payment from Smart Marketing. They paid Smart Marketing. The money's going the other direction. So the law looks at that as a way of, do you have a financial interest in the outcome of the award of this contract? Based on the information that I have that, that they paid but did not receive, there is no legal conflict of interest in this matter.
All right. What percentage of a sales tax is council considering? Again, we're at the very early stages of this. We've, in terms of discussions, we've quantified what a 1% is, just to understand what that means. And, but there hasn't been discussion as to, is it a 1%? Is it a half a percent? And then going into it, will it be a general sales tax or a special sales tax? At the last council meeting, the council members expressed their opinion as to whether it would be, what, what their, their preference would be. I would say that, and please correct me if I'm wrong in summarizing this, that the majority was their preference would be a special sales tax that would target specifically public safety and roads. And so that's, but that would be, to be determined as we work through this process. Why is the city seeking a revenue measure now when it didn't participate in Sutter County's Measure A? I think that's a very valid question. Why didn't the city participate in Sutter County's Measure A? And as I noted at the last meeting, you know, when we were approached by the county, the county had had time, because they had been working on it for a while, to evaluate where they were at and, you know, the needs that they had. We had not had that same amount of time. And with this council, and they joke with me because of the way I talk about them in terms of being very data-driven, analytical, this is a council that wants to know what are the steps? What are the milestones? What is the direction that we're going? And they want it spelled out. And they also want it to be, to identify the need. And, and we hadn't gone through that process. And so in not going through that process, it was difficult for council to participate with Sutter County's Measure A. And at the time, the discussions that we had with Sutter County were related to, were they willing to defer, I will say Sutter County representatives, because it wasn't the full board that this was discussed with, were they willing to defer to November of 2024 to consider a joint measure so that we could both be on the same page? If the revenue measure is successful, will the city share revenues with Sutter County? Again, we're at the very beginning of this process. I will say for the, the community members that spoke out at the last meeting, it was very clear. clear that there is a desire for Yuba City to be talking to Sutter County as well as considering the City of Live Oak. And, you know, so that is to be determined. It's also my understanding that in talking to Steve Smith with Sutter County, that there is going to be a recommendation to the Sutter County Board of Supervisors to designate a revenue ad hoc, in which they would have two supervisors participating that could then coordinate with our revenue ad hoc. Why isn't the city discussing reducing services or staff to reduce costs? So as I noted at the beginning of the presentation, the budget, the city council has had a budget ad hoc committee since 2019. Through that process, you know, they've gone through the budget, they've evaluated need, they've evaluated staffing levels, they've evaluated budget requests. And, you know, from their perspective, and again, please correct me if I'm misspeaking, but we are at a level that we need to be to be able to maintain the services that we have. Now, if there needs to be a discussion about reducing services, then that's a discussion that we'll have to take. But where we're at currently, this is the level that we need to be based upon the services that we have. Another point is that of the $52.5 million general fund budget, police makes up $20 million of that budget, and fire makes up $13 million of that budget. So public safety is 63% of our general fund budget. The next two largest departments that are funded through the general fund are public works and community services. And public works is a little bit misleading in that the funding that's coming through to public works is coming from other funds. So you have streets and roads funds, you have, you know, other funds that come into that that go through the general fund to then get distributed to public works. The next department in community services, that's your parks and recreation. And with parks, yes, you can decrease the level of service for your parks in terms of the level of care. You can reduce your recreation programs. The recreation programs are provided to not only Yuba City residents, but anyone within the community. It also covers the senior center, and we, you know, a lot of individuals, even outside this city of Yuba City, use the senior center. So you can reduce the budget. It's not going to make up a significant amount of any type of shortfall, and you're then addressing quality of life issues. All right, so fiscal impact. So the total consulting fee is not to exceed $135,000. So the base consulting fee would be $7,500 per month, and that's at 18 months. That would get us through August of 2024. In addition, there's a budget of $40,000 requested for hard costs. That is for printing, graphic design, that type of thing. And, you know, with this, the total budget would be a not-to-exceed amount of $175,000. There's currently $100,000 available in the professional services account within the city manager budget. In addition, we'd be requesting a supplemental appropriation of $75,000 from ARPA money. The city currently has about $6.6 million of ARPA money. And there was a question about, "Well, why aren't you using the ARPA money to help you get through this time?" And that's one of the reasons that the ARPA money has been set aside. That $6.6 million is to assist during the next couple of years. In regard to alternatives, council could direct staff to issue a request for proposals. Do not proceed with pursuing a potential November 2024 revenue measure and dissolve the revenue ad hoc committee. Provide direction to the revenue ad hoc committee to explore other opportunities to generate revenues, or in addition to that, I would say, or to evaluate expenditures. And then number four, direct staff to reduce the scope of services. So with that, the recommendation is up on the screen. I'm not going to read it, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that, city manager. Before we go into public comment, I do have a note that written public comment was received on this item from, and forgive me if I mispronounce this, Deborah Destroyers, Destroyers?
DeRoziers.
DeRoziers? This public comment was distributed to city council, and hard copies have been made available to the public. And it does look like we do have some speaker cards. We're going to go in sequential order. The first one is from Phil, is it Trainer?
Yeah.
So go ahead and step up to the mic, sir.
Phil Trainer, Yuba City. I came here after reading your article in the Appeal Democrat a couple of weeks ago. Then I read the same thing today in the Appeal Democrat, and I have a couple of questions to ask. With hat in hand, my local Appeal Democrat, I go to the issue of how the money is going to be spent. I'll go down this list. You talk about phase one. You're going to figure out how you're going to spend your money and what it's for. Everybody in here knows what it's for. It's for the roads. You don't need that phase. Now, I'm saving your money. Phase two, communications are need. This will be for the successful public financing, et cetera, et cetera. Everybody knows it's going to be public financing. You don't need that. That's two things that are out. Number three, building and understanding. What do you need that for? That's the same thing as number one. Gentlemen, you're throwing your money around. We know what you need the money for. 1% isn't going to do the deed anyway. If you've got 3% or 4%, you don't have enough to do what you have to do. Put your hats on. Try to figure out what to do. We that sit up here and tell you what we think. I don't have enough time to tell you what to think, what you should do. Perhaps you should maybe draw another yellow line down the road and bypass all the potholes. Because it's taken, all of our cars are going to hell because of what's happening, but it's not your fault. It's the public's fault. Public don't give a damn, but we want things to happen. What I'm saying is that we don't need to expend money that's not needed. Do something that you, when you spoke to the public about voting you into office, you told us all these wonderful things you're going to do, and then you sat there, and you come back and say, "Well, it's not up to us." Well, I think it is. But I do appreciate the fact that you people do run for office, because I couldn't. But I think you have to do something beyond this marketing issue. And I've said more than I should. I've come up with all the time I should use for the three minutes. If anybody else wants to use my extra time, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Liz Cervantes.
Hi. Liz Cervantes, 862 Country Lane, Yuba City, California 95991. Can I have Phil's extra time? Number one, it's like deja vu for me, because I'm usually here on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. Same chamber, different cast of characters, but the same thing. Tax, 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 tax! You can put lipstick on a pig and call it a revenue measure all you want. I don't care about your tax. You said that you won't impose it on the people, and I appreciate that. I'm going to tell you one thing. You don't need a marketing firm to sell a tax. Your constituents are smart enough to figure out whether they want it or not. I tell you guys the same thing that I told Nate Black last night, which that was sure an interesting conversation. Learned a lot from him. First of all, a safety tax should be the 50% plus one, right? The general tax should be the hard one, the 66. You're not going to impose a tax. Let your people decide. Put it on the ballot. You don't need a marketing firm to sell your tax. You're lamenting about you're broke, you need the revenue, and you're going to spend it on some slick marketing agency that represented you, and you, and you, and Dave Shaw, which I'm not sure where he is. But regardless of whether or not it is legal, it is inherently, inherently unethical, and it is a conflict. And I will be at every one of your meetings tormenting you, just like I did to Sutter County. But I want to ask you a question. I know you guys can't answer. You are you, please. Diana, cutest, cutest girl ever. I mean, if you want somebody to lay out a tax, man, that's your person right there. I noticed Smart Marketing isn't here. But what I was told was that from that ARPA money, that Sutter County gave the city $2.5 million to keep businesses open? Is that fact or fiction?
I'll direct this through the mayor. I'm not aware of Sutter County giving directly any money to the city, and I'm not sure if maybe that's related to the loan program that they did through the Yuba Sutter--
Let me read it.
--Economic Development Corporation.
Let me read it. The county gave over $2.5 million of ARPA money to city businesses to keep them open.
City businesses, not the city of Yuba City.
Okay, I stand corrected. Just going to implore you, again, you don't need a marketing firm to sell your tax. Your tax is already lost. I can guarantee that. Am I done? That's it? Getting hooked off. I'll be here next meeting.
Thank you. Next card comes from Heather, excuse me, Heather Eschman?
Good evening, gentlemen. So, thank you for pulling that last week and bringing that to this week because I was, or the last meeting because I was sick. Oh, I don't give my address, but I will tell you that I do live in Yuba City. They all know where I live. Yeah, so anyways, you see, I come here almost every time. They know that. So I'm familiar with what they do. And I do have to say one thing, that this council does not just sit around. And if you stay till the end, like I do, and a few of the others that come here regularly, you'll hear how many committees and commissions and boards they sit on. They are probably 20 to 30 hours a week just on doing that, not including all the stuff they have to read, if you read the packet that they had, which was, I think, I don't know, 200 pages or something like that for tonight. So this is basically the process a city or a county or a government has to take in order to kind of get an idea of what direction it needs to go, as well as what the people are going to pass. And I do have to remind everybody here that the other measure, lost by just a slight percentage, Measure A, and they also had the same thing. They were trying with marketing to get that communication out on what they were doing. But potentially, if they had found somebody who was starting a little bit earlier, could have worked with them to determine whether or not they really had enough support for special tax and may potentially have passed the special tax as opposed to the general revenue measure. So I do think, though, that would be nice if, and I've said this many, many times here, not only to you, but also to the county and some of the other agencies, that it's really key that we're working together with the county. And I know it's hard sometimes, but sometimes you're just going to have to figure out a time and a place and people that are representative and sit down. Because what could potentially happen also is, the county needs the money. We know the county needs the money, and they might try it again. So what happens in '24 when they're doing something and you're doing something? It has to be coordinated. You're never going to be able to pass, if you pass 1% and they pass 1%, then it's 2% for Yuba City, right? So it has to be something that's working between everybody, but at the same time, enough money, because you're not going to be able to cut the budget. She just told everybody, the budget is, more than two-thirds of the budget is just police and fire. Now, if anybody in here wants to cut the police or fire budget, then they have to speak to me, because there's a lot of money, there's a lot of money that they even, they need more. Fire is fortunately pretty good on this side, but the Sutter County is really hurting for fire. And the more that we do helps them to make sure that everybody is safe. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next card comes from Richard Cray? Oh.
Yes, my name is Richard Cray, C-R-A-Y. I live in Yuba City, 2160 Live Oak Boulevard. And I'd like to thank the manager for explaining that some of the speakers at the meeting two weeks ago, that his two former council members and a former supervisor urged you to pass up on this deal and to try to work with Sutter County and combine your efforts. Because I think the thing that you'd hate to see is entering into a contract here with this organization that has come under public scrutiny lately. And even though the attorney has said that there is no conflict of interest, what I think will still be apparent to the public is that there is an element of cronyism involved in this. So I'd like you to reconsider the whole notion of jumping off the cliff like this and go back to the drawing board. Please work with Sutter County, the City of Live Oak, because you all need resources. And if you're all fighting over the same idea, nobody's going to win. And how do you explain spending $175,000 on something that doesn't happen when election time comes? So please reconsider and start over again and work with Sutter County. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Linda Baker.
Linda Baker, Yuba City. The older I get, and I blessedly get older every day, the wiser my late father becomes. I can't count the times my father said to me, "Honey, it's not what you do or say, it's what people think you do or say." As I talk to voters in this community who pay attention, I am convinced that they think this is not a good way to approach a budget measure, a revenue measure. And is not going to, by adopting this contract without any kind of consideration for any other options, is not a way to engender confidence in voters that if they pay extra taxes, the revenue will be well-spent. I encourage you to reconsider this and proceed otherwise, not pass this.
Thank you. So that's the end of our cards. Do we have any further public comment on this item?
My name is Thomas Burns. And, yeah, I've been to the council meeting many, many times and got weary from it, because, you know, they already made up their mind. So I talked to a lot of business owners in the last few days, and none of them are in support of more taxes, for one. That's the number one issue, raising our taxes more. And, you know, some of them even said to me without any coercion, "Well, they use the same old song and dance. It's the police and fire and the roads, right? It's the same marketing tool, but nothing ever changes, right? Look at the roads." So it's, it's kind of disgusting to me. And I say, if you'd like to, you know, grease the wheels of this marketing agency, how about hiring another marketing agency for the same funds to give the opposing viewpoint? Now, that would be fair, wouldn't it? See? That would be pretty fair. That way, you know, you can't bamboozle the people. That way, you know, you can't bamboozle the people so easily. Anyway, it's a sad day for Yuba City.
Okay, thank you. Any further public comment on this item?
Evening, gentlemen. My name's Chuck Smith. I'm from Yuba City. I also ran for city council, and I probably talked to the same, a lot of the same people that you did, Mark. And every one of them was against a tax, tax increase. And I also came across some stuff that, I saw the contract that you guys approved for the employees of city council, not, of Yuba City, all the employees. And that was anywhere from a 5% to a 40% increase for their pay, along with a 5% cost of living increase. How much money is that going to be over the next four years? And you're still trying to get a tax going so that you can pay for that, the pay raise that you gave. I mean, you're going around in circles, gentlemen. People here in Yuba City do not want a tax increase. They made that perfectly clear with the county. So, I suggest that you look elsewhere and look to where you can build revenue for this city without, on the backs of the citizens of Yuba City. People here don't want a tax. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further public comment on this item? Any further public comment on this item? Okay, I'll bring it back to council.
Thank you all for being here tonight. It's always, I think, important to continue to hear from the public. Don't agree with some of the comments that were made. I don't think that anyone's going to find that surprising. But at the same time, I think that, for the, at least the time being, we have done a lot of due diligence over the last four years. And sure, you can point to salary increases, and you can point to, you know, the roads are in horrible condition, and you can point to a homeless problem, and probably a handful of other things. You know, we are in a position here, as electeds, to attempt to manage a city of 70,000 and do what we feel is in the best interest of the public, based upon the feedback that we get from you and from others. And when it comes to making a decision, it's taking all that information in and then making a decision. Some of you will be happy with that decision, some of you will be less than happy with that decision. That goes with the job up here, and I'm certainly not complaining. I enjoy being in a position to try to keep the city moving in the right direction. Couple of things, you know, I wish, wholeheartedly, that the money that was intended to be paid for our roads through gas taxes and other things that went to Sacramento was truly being used for that purpose and being returned to the city of Yuba City. We might be in a bit, a little bit better situation with the roads, but that's not the case. I've heard, I've heard others, included an elected tax person, say, "Well, you guys should just go after the state and get it back." I don't think that's realistic at all, to be honest with you. It's not going to happen. I wish it would, but to be honest with you, I can go down, we can go down to Sacramento and talk to her blue in the face, and we're not, you know, there's not going to be any of that coming back. As to the issue of the discussions with Sutter County, I think one thing that is important to note, and as a member of the Revenue Ad Hoc Committee, it's likely that I will be sitting again with representatives from Sutter County, trying to figure a way to do something together. And I agree that it should be something that could be done together. But at the same time, you know, we, we as a city have our needs and they have their needs. I believe there are reasonable people over there. I've had some discussions with them continuing, and I do think that at this particular point in time, we will continue to have those discussions, and I think it's appropriate for us to do so. The issue of conflict of interest I addressed last time, I'm not going to get into that again. You know, you're, everyone's free to make their own assumptions about whether I'm bought and paid for, and you can have those. I assure you, I'm not. And as it relates to the issue of sole source or not going out to bid, it's interesting. Interesting what's happened, what happens in our community and the scrutiny that we get, maybe others don't get, but that's okay, too. When we talk, when we thought about this, we gave it a lot of hard thought in regards to, okay, what's, what's the public's perception? And I think the city manager sort of touched on it. No matter what we did here, there are those people that are going to take exception. If we had done it, if we had selected a marketing firm outside of the area, you would have likely been upset with that. If we selected a firm to help us get the message out from a local place, we thought that that was in the best interest of the city. If we, if we did a selection process and did it and never brought it to light, once it came to light, which it would, then you'd probably be in here asking us, "What the hell did we do? Why didn't you bring it to us?" So in our effort to be transparent, here we are today. And, you know, there's issues about, well, you're getting off on the wrong foot. I don't think there's a right foot or a wrong foot. There are those folks who are going to be inherently against a tax, and I don't disagree with you for being against a tax. I just ask you to take a look at what we're going to present, and then make your judgment. And like I mentioned before, we can't impose, okay? There's, I don't know, 50,000 voters in the city? Something like that? You know, they're going to have an opportunity to weigh in on this if, if, if we decide to go forward with the revenue measure. Are we inviting the public to participate? Yeah, we're going to still have a Citizens Ad Hoc Committee. Yeah, we're going to be dealing with the county. And I think that, that, again, there are going to be people that understand that. I've heard from plenty of them, and I've heard from some of you in the audience, that you're not happy with that. You know what? I respect that, but at the same time, you know, I'm elected to make a decision. I feel, you know, we'll see how this goes tonight, but I think I've, I've pretty made, pretty much made my intent pretty clear here in the last meeting as well. So, I'll end my comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? We all know that our roads are in terrible shape. I agree with the gentleman, I guess he's left now, that why do you have to educate the public? Drive on our street? It's real evident that we need our streets fixed. We can't cut our budget $15 million. I mean, I'm a business owner. I can't cut my budget by 30%. I have to live within my means as well. Do I take price increases? You bet I do. I want to stay in business. I want to employ the people that I employ. It's unfortunate that we have to go down the route of using a firm to educate the public because they don't want to listen a lot of the time. They jump to conclusions. And I saw in my comments at the last meeting that we were headed down. We were just basically, people's emotions were raging. The fact is, we need the revenue. I am, I've always been for that. I even in forums, I just, I was for revenue, but they went about it the wrong way, wanted to go about it the right way. That's the way the Ad Hoc Committee has brought it to us, is to bring it to you the right way. A lot of you have taken exception that it's not the right way. I took a stance with you that maybe we should go out for the RFP, that we shouldn't just give it, or not, award it to the company that it be. But seeing that you're letting your emotions get ahead of our roads, unfortunately, it's a tough decision. It's a tough decision to sit up here and make these decisions. And I will, I will make the best choice, I think, for our community, because I'm part of that community, just as you. I ride on the same streets. I pay the same taxes. I made the comment at the last meeting that I have to work 86 hours at a 1550 an hour in order just to pay my property taxes in this community. Do I like it? No, I don't. But I sure like having water, my sewer, my police show up, my fire show up, and my streets repaired. And that's what I'm up here to make the decisions on for you. You elected me to do that, and I will do that. The process that we're using, I was against because of all the comment that was brought to, to my attention. But as Councilmember Boomgarden has just expressed, there's going to be happy and there's going to be unhappy. And I feel that I need to make the best choice for my community, that I've been here my whole life, my whole life, fifth generation in this community. And we need, we need the revenue. And I'm sorry that you don't like the process that is brought. It's, there's no conflicts. The process is in our policy and procedures. And so, that's where I am at this point with this whole discussion.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, gentlemen. You know, this, for all of us who live here in Yuba City, and I think that's pretty close to all of us, we all want the same thing. We want a safe and vibrant city with good roads, good public service, and good quality of life. That does take money, right? And we talk a lot about procedure. As Councilmember Boomgarden said, we deliberately wanted to come out from behind the metaphorical curtain and let everybody know what our thought processes are, to give people options upfront. We could have avoided the whole controversy, the texts and the love notes that we get about different things and the way things are going, but we don't. As was also said, that's what we're elected to do. We take the good with the bad. And someone once told me, you know, it's like a baseball game. Every pitch makes somebody happy, every pitch makes somebody sad. And we're here to sit up here to make a decision, even the tough decisions, especially those tough decisions. We, we talk about perception, and I tell you, the reason why we have meetings like this, and the reason why we have public forums, is to communicate with one another and dispel perceptions and replace that with facts. If we went, made decisions by emotions alone, this would be, it would be a complete nightmare. We have to think pragmatically, we have to think practically, we have to dispel with all personal leanings, one way or the other, and look at the facts. And the facts is, you drive down our roads, it's going to have a problem for your car. And I could go down the list of things there, too. There are people in this world who perceive the world to be flat. Does that mean we have to change the way we do to accommodate that thought process? Absolutely not. Again, we back up, we zoom out, we look at where we want to be. How do we get there? What are our options? Our options are not to reduce services, wouldn't even, wouldn't even make a dent in what we have to do. And so, as an option, it was brought forth to us, and we talked about it in depth, would be a potential revenue measure. Now, the options of going with the county, percentages this, percentages that, Live Oak, all these other things, that comes later. Working with the county is not off the table. We are here today to decide whether we want to get some assistance to delivering a well-thought-out, accurate, factual, unbiased message to the public, okay? A lot of people, unlike some people that are here today, are not informed, and they want to know, and they don't know what the details are, or the reasons why this opportunity to vote yea or nay on a revenue measure would come before them in the polls. And so, we want, we have a responsibility to make sure they get accurate information. We're not out here campaigning in favor of it. We don't, we want to make sure that the community and the voters understand what it is, and more importantly, why it is. And so, that's the opportunity we have today. Smart marketing came forward, they submitted a proposal. Again, as our city attorney said, there is no conflict because the money's going the other direction, right? And if we talk about RFP process, it's my understanding that the, like, as Councilmember Boomgarden said, had we just gone directly to outside the community, that would have been criticism. If we'd done other things, criticism, criticism. Either way, we're kind of going to lose, lose, if you will, and not everybody's going to be thrilled with this. We get that, we take that on, we have, we have decisions to make, and we're going to do that tonight, the first one. And that is to hire somebody, potentially, I don't know what the votes are going to be, but to help us deliver that message accurately. We don't have the time, we don't have the expertise. So, that is why we are here today, is to make that decision only. Working with the county is not off the table. It could very well happen. And we will have conversations with them if we go further with this, so. But I do appreciate folks coming, I do appreciate all of the opinions, either ones contrary to my own, especially those, because that's how we communicate, right? And that's, that dispels those misperceptions and things like that. So we don't want to make assumptions, and it's interesting how sometimes assumptions, when all the facts aren't there, are always bad, always the worst-case scenario. Well, I ask for folks today, and to remember that, remember the trust that was represented by your vote, those of you who did vote for us, that we are not here to lie to you, we are not here to take anything from you, that, do anything bad. We live here, too. Our, our purpose here is to try to get through all the weeds and make a very methodical, pragmatic, just, informed decision. And to do so, to help the voters do the same thing when it comes time.
Thank you for that advice, Mayor. So, we brought up earlier transparency, and this council you have before you is all about transparency. And I think that's led to my decision to bring this before the community after the last council meeting, and the fact that we only had three of us up here. So that led to that decision, because we wanted to make sure this community saw and participated in that. It was brought up, it was brought up earlier, the reason why I brought up the cannabis issue at the last meeting was to try to explain that this council has looked at other revenue streams. And that's why we had that informational meeting a year and a half ago. The community showed up and resoundingly said no. And so, it's not like this council is just going towards a revenue measure without exhausting other options. We, we, we have looked at other options. And cannabis is not one of those. I tried to educate myself on the revenue measure process during Measure, Measure A campaign, and I was a supporter of that. I voted for Measure A. If you, if you do have an opportunity, if you go online and just Google measure, revenue measures in the state of California 2022, there is a long, long list of communities that attempted that, and many of them succeeded. So I got to think folks in those communities have similar issues that we have. They want roads they can drive on, and they want to be safe. And just in our local area, Chico, full scent, no sunset, it's going to contribute between 25, 24 and 25 million a year. They did that for a reason. Kaluza County, another one, half cent, four cent, excuse me, half cent, four-year sunset, 1.5 million towards public safety. They did that for a reason. When I was contacted in the early process of the, when we were looking for a marketing firm for, for a potential revenue measure, I kept getting asked the same question. RFP, RFP, why didn't you do an RFP? Those same people didn't ask me, "Why didn't the county do an RFP?" Well, why didn't they do an RFP? They didn't. I think there's a lot of, there's, there's, there's a value of buying local rather than going outside of the area, again, like the county did. So, I'm just going to, I'm just going to cut this short by saying, and it was brought up earlier, the article in the paper today, and the article had, had, had made a really good point. And that was that this particular marketing company led a successful revenue measure, Measure K, in Yuba County. marketing company led a successful revenue measure, Measure K, in Yuba County, and that's spoke volumes to me. So having said that, I will bring the matter back to the council for action.
Through the mayor.
Yes.
Move to approve staff's recommendation. You want me to read the whole thing?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, we're going to go ahead and re-adjourn. Consent calendar. All matters listed on a consent calendar are considered to be routine and can be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time that council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed or removed from consent counter for individual action. Do we have any comments from the public on consent counter items five through twelve? Five through twelve. Public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council for action.
Through the mayor, move to approve consent calendar.
So I have a motion from the vice mayor.
Second.
And I have a second from Councilmember Pasquale. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those opposed say nay. Ayes have it. Okay, moving along to business item thirteen.
Through the mayor, I need to recuse myself as I own property adjacent to the railroad corridor.
Right. Thank you, sir. This is item thirteen, abandoned railroad railroad corridor feasibility study adoption continued from February twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three, presented by Josh Wolfe.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Thank you again for having me tonight. There's a few, as Diana said before this evening, there are quite a few more people in the crowd tonight, so I'll go ahead and give the same presentation, although it's been shortened slightly. So tonight, I'm coming to present the abandoned railroad corridor feasibility study adoption. So basically, what we're looking at is the abandoned railroad corridor from the DRS Bain Parks all the way that goes diagonally through town southeast, down to Clark Avenue, and then evens out and connects to Pluma Street. So as a little bit of a background, in twenty, in October of two thousand nineteen, the Public Works Department applied for a Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Sustainable Communities Grant Secure Feasibility Study funding. And this study was to determine converting the feasibility study, sorry, the study was to determine converting the existing abandoned Union Pacific Railroad Corridor into a shared use trail. In June of two thousand twenty, the city was notified that it was awarded two hundred thousand dollars from Caltrans to fund the study. Then in November of two thousand twenty, the city entered into an agreement with Caltrans to receive the funding. In September of two thousand twenty-one, city issued a request for proposals for the study development with a deadline of October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-one. And then in December of two thousand twenty-one, city council awarded a professional services agreement to Dockin Engineering for the study development. So throughout two thousand twenty-two, Dockin performed outreach. There were multiple events, including a pop-up at the farmers, local farmer's market. We had a booth at the Yuba Sutter Fair. And then we had a stakeholder meeting involving agencies and community members. And then we had another community meeting at Gray Avenue Middle School. Then Dockin went through and audited the abandoned railroad corridors right of way and its physical and environmental conditions as it sits. Throughout the feasibility study, they determined or they provided two alternatives. The first alternative is a eighteen-foot-wide shared use path. Twelve feet of that path would be asphalt concrete or AC, and then six-foot would be concrete with two-foot shoulders on either side. And then the second alternative was an eighteen-foot-wide AC path. Through the analysis, they determined that option one or alternative one, the twelve-foot-wide AC path plus the six-foot-wide shared use sidewalk would be the best option for a variety of reasons, one of which being concrete is is less maintenance over time, so less cost in maintenance over the years. Second, it's a good delineator for visibility. There's conflicts on the existing path between bicyclists and pedestrians. If you have a clearly visible location for pedestrians to use and then for bicyclists to use the other, that would be helpful in in coordinating path usage. Another part of the analysis was over crossings throughout the city. So at the intersection of State Route twenty in Stabler Lane, Dockin Engineering reviewed options for traversing through the city diagonally at some of the higher-volume intersections. Stabler Lane and ninety-nine or Stabler Lane and State Route twenty are very high-volume areas. They get very congested. They looked at at-grade options, below-grade options, and above-grade options. And through the review, they determined that the above-grade option would be the safest, least amount of stress option that would provide the least amount of conflict between pedestrians, cyclists, and cars. And then this slide here, we have the crossing at State Route ninety-nine. One thing I would like to point out on this slide in particular is Dockin was cognizant of future developments that may occur in this area in particular. There's developments that are slated for widening Civic Center Boulevard. They looked at that, and they ensured that there was a route to design the path and overcrossing such that we don't hamper future developments. Some of the safety components looked at and considered in the process are listed as follows. On the top left corner here, you have some bulbouts. These are used to make the crossing path for pedestrians shorter while also creating sort of a bottleneck effect for vehicles to make them more aware and slow down when pedestrians, cyclists are available. This top right one is what's called a high-intensity activated crosswalk or a hawk signal. These are used in high-volume traffic or high-volume intersections. They are much or they can be more visible to drivers. They look just like a traffic signal, and they're used to ensure that pedestrians are seen. Another item that may be used in construction is a pedestrian refuge island and rapid flashing beacons. We have some of these throughout town, and they're used very frequently from from students, pedestrians, and others. And then this corner is just a close-up of what the hawk signal head looks like. And then they looked towards Pluma Street, where the abandoned railroad corridor ends. And with this being a regional effort, there's a desire to connect to the Feather River Levy Trail, and then ultimately to the Fifth Street Bridge into Marysville. There isn't any railroad corridor to easily go through, so they looked at about eight different options to see what would be the least amount of stress for pedestrians, cyclists to get to the Feather River Levy Trail, least amount of conflict with existing businesses and cost. And they determined that the preferred alternative would be going south along Pluma Street, down B Street, and then to the Feather River Levy Trail. Some of the potential trail amenities would include benches, trashcans along the paths of people that could stop, take a rest, and keep the trail clean. Another thing that could be considered are fix-it stations. This is actually this one of the stations installed at the new park. Fitness nodes would be a thing that we could consider. Keep in mind, this is all very preliminary, so these are just ideas of what could be included. Shade trees, low-maintenance, low-water shade trees could be installed along the path to provide shade and also beautify the corridor. Solar lighting to provide security would be something that is something that was mentioned in some of our meetings and could be implemented. And then water fountains are another thing that would be that could be implemented as well. So for the fiscal impact, as I said before, the city was awarded two hundred thousand dollars to complete the feasibility study with a local match of twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twelve dollars. The staff is currently working towards the final reimbursement with Caltrans. So throughout the closeout process, there's no additional cost associated with adopting the study. Further, since further, this feasibility study adoption will help us leverage for funds through grants through different grant programs that exist, such as the congestion mitigation and air quality grant, CMAC, Active Transportation Program, ATP, the Regional Trails Program, RTP, and then the Surface Transportation Block Program, STBG. Those are just some of the programs that we can apply for. And if we do adopt a feasibility study, will help us leverage and leverage funds and have a higher likelihood that we would get awarded funds in the future. A couple alternatives we have would be, one, do not adopt the study. This could compromise future grant funding opportunities if we don't have a feasibility study in place to include in our grant applications. Two would be requesting modifications to be made to the study. This will occur or this will incur additional costs from Dockin and may affect grant funding opportunities as well. What the what city staff's recommendation is, is to adopt a resolution which adopts the abandoned railroad corridor feasibility study.
Okay. Looks like we have a couple of. Looks like we have a couple of speaker cards on this item. The first one is from Eric. Is it Ardis?
It's Paredes.
Paredes. Sorry about that.
Marnie's gonna join me as well.
Okay, very nice.
I'm stealing some of Eric's time. Mark.
Oh, thank you. Marnie Sanders, the executive director of Blue Zones Project Yuba Sutter. And we're just here tonight to offer this our support of the the adoption of this feasibility study. As some of you know, Blue Zones Project Yuba Sutter is about bringing health and well-being to the community and making healthy choices easier on folks. And so Built Environments, which is one of our policy platforms that Eric can talk a little bit more knowledgeably about than I can, since this is only day two for me. But this is definitely something within our wheelhouse and is actually Built Environments is one of our thirteen pillars with Blue Zones. So just from Blue Zones, we want to lend our support of this project.
Great. Thank you. My name is Eric Paredes, and I have the privilege of serving as a public policy advocate here at Blue Zones Project Yuba Sutter. And, you know, just like Marnie said, we're here to really just commend the city, the staff, the council, and mayor for really just finding ways to get our community to really move naturally. So in the five original Blue Zones, people lived longer and healthier because their built environment was designed in ways that really encouraged that natural movement at times without even thinking about it. So the roads were designed in ways that encouraged other modes of transportation, so walking, cycling. But we really just wanted to take this opportunity to come and say thank you for finding different ways to encourage natural movement. And we, you know, also are thankful that the city and staff has been so supportive of Blue Zones Project Yuba Sutter. And we look forward to not only supporting this project, but other projects that do encourage natural movement. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. We have a second card from Heather Eschman.
Yes, Heather Essman. So I I wanted to. Everybody's commenting about how much money everything costs, but you did a really good job as far as you got a grant for this, and it only cost us twenty-five thousand. So way to go, city. But I, as part of, because I'm actually on the Parks and Rec Commission, and I've been looking at this, and I've been participating in some of these forums. And I actually been visiting some of our, let's just say, those people that we compete with for community members, right? So Antelope, Roseville, and they're they're growing quite a bit. And one of the things that they're growing along is they have their own little pedestrian bike path, which is there's no it's it's a dry creek or something like that. There's no real water there, but it's right along that. And we, although we have the river, we don't have anything going through town. It's not like Bigwell Park at Chico or things like that. So this this is a really good opportunity to create something like that. In twenty years, imagine how tall the trees will be. What would it look like? It'll look just the same. And so I've been looking at those and and they they have all of those amenities. They have like little fitness nodes. They have places where you can sit down. They have little gardens or something along the way. And the design that I noticed didn't seem to have any of these design elements listed in there, any type of landscaping or like special park benches or anything like that listed there. It just seemed to be kind of the bare minimum for the project. So I want to remind you that that the amount that's listed, which was seventy million dollars, is a big price tag. But they didn't break that down, except for maybe one of the overpasses. I really would have liked to have seen, and I've said this multiple times during the meetings, that we don't get focused so much on the big projects that are going to take a lot of effort. And remember that there is incredibly easy to implement from Plumas over to San Brennan, and that would bring people instant help right now. There are people, if you look at the if you looked at the present, not the presentation, but the the package, it showed that that low-income area, that there was a lot of those needs, that needy area, people who may not have really good transportation and and could have to go to their bike to get to Walmart or or all the restaurants to go to work, right? They'd have that option to either just walk right through or ride their bike. It's it's and and work. But anyway, so one of the things I did want to say is that if you can, because one of the alternatives there was to go back and ask them if maybe they could just at least give you that percentage or that part, how much that would cost. So if for some reason things aren't working, and you're not getting that grant funding, that you could at least focus in on that portion of it so we can get that implemented instead of worrying about whether or not Caltrans is going to approve an overpass and go through that, because that could take us ten years to get that done, and we're still waiting for that one segment, if that makes sense. Remember also, one of them said, build it, we will come. It was one of their comments. So thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment on this item? Any further public comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to council. Move to approve. Well, do we have any comment? Excuse me, one second. Do we have any comment on this?
No comment, other than I would like to commend Eric. Eric very well presented.
Eric, very well presentation. You're definitely an asset to Blue Zones. You did a good job. It's like, it's nice to see younger people that can get up here and speak, and I can hear them, and you're articulate, and good job. And if you move to approve, I'll second.
So move to approve.
All those in favor, say, I'm sorry, excuse me, let me back up a little bit. I just want to say one thing real quick. I thought the vice mayor was going to talk a lot more about this. Project has been near and dear to the vice mayor's heart and to mine as well. I will say that I was very skeptical about the overpasses, the concept of that until, I believe it was last year, Chico got $15 million, $15 million grant for a bike path over Highway 99. And so that made me a believer. This goes to one of the council's goals, goes to quality of life. And anybody who spent any time on that, on that bike path, it's a, it's a community out there. And holy cow, during COVID, it was a huge community out there. So this, this is a, this is a huge asset. And with that, yes.
And forgive me for going backwards. Yeah, I was kind of, I didn't want to forget Eric, but I also don't want to forget you, Josh. Very well put-together presentation. And yes, this is a, a project that will enhance our community, I mean, big time. It's a, you got a hefty price tag. Heather brings up a good point about incremental as funding becomes available, if they will do that. But, you know, in addition to Chico, there's another pedestrian over crossing, just I believe it's just south of Woodland on 113. So it is doable, and hopefully we will build it, and hopefully they will come, right? But thank you very much. Well done.
Thank you. Yes, and with that, I'll bring it back to council for action. Okay, we got a first, we got a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. Motion carries. This is an opportunity to discuss with the city manager about items that came up in the meeting that you would like to have brought back to council at a later date. Do we have any comments from the public? Any comments? Okay, seeing none. Reports and communications. The following reports and communications items are provided for the council's information. No action can be taken on items under this section unless the council agrees to include it on subsequent agenda. Number 16, city managers' report.
Thank you. I just want to acknowledge Josh with his presentation and the work that he did on that project between Josh and David Gianco, who was, who just left. You know, what a fantastic job coordinating the community meetings and some of the most, highest attendance at the community meetings that we had. And in terms of the finished product, you know, it's something for us to dream about. And I also agree that in terms of breaking it into phases, and that was one of Josh's goals, was to break it into phases so that it can be constructed incrementally. And he just did a fantastic job. I love to see our associate engineers get experience in front of council doing presentations, and he, he hit it out of the park. So congratulations to Josh. Next item, we have a recology cleanup day that we're really excited about, March 25th, from 8:00 AM to noon, the Kmart parking lot. And thank you to Sutter County for allowing us to use the Kmart parking lot. This will be the first cleanup day that has occurred in partnership with recology. And so we're not sure as to the amount of participation. We're a little bit concerned, scared about the amount of participation that we're going to get, but it's going to, we're encouraging people, and there's some flyers that are posted on social media in terms of the things that can be brought to that location for disposal. Also, I want to acknowledge Spencer Morrison and the finance team. They received the California Society of Municipal Finance Officers Operating Budget Excellence Award for fiscal year 2223. If you go to the CSMFO website and you look at what it takes to get this award, there are over 40 items, and if you're not an accountant, your eyes will kind of glaze over in terms of the things that you have to submit. But they, they are able to address all of those items. And Spencer, how many years now have, has, have you received this award? Do you know?
I think there was one year, for some reason, that we did not apply for it, but it's been consistent since about 2001.
All right. So over 20 years. So congratulations to, and that's with the new team as well, for the most part, with a lot of new people. We are in our, the middle of our budget process right now, and just to put it on the public's radar, we will have a budget workshop on April, or on May 23rd at 5:00 PM. And then our UCAN with Yuba City Initiative, there is a shop talk scheduled for developers Thursday, March 16th at noon at Sopatai. So we encourage individuals to participate in our shop talks. And then I assume I'll let council address the community workshop that we had for Merrimette Village. So thank you.
Thank you. Number 17, city council reports. We are going to start this evening with council member Boom Garden.
Thank you, mayor. This morning, I attended a meeting of the Board of Realtors. They were interested in what was going on housing-wise in the city, so I was able to help them understand all the projects that we have, including some new business development. Couple good questions coming back that I'm going to follow up on in regards to some emerging programs out there for those folks who are first-time buyers that I was, I was a little bit aware of, but got a whole lot more information on. And hopefully, you know, with the housing thing that we've got going on here in town, that's, that's a big deal. I want to give a, a special acknowledgement to our fire chief, Jesse Alexander. He presented this morning at the Yuba City Early Risers Kiwanis, and did an excellent job in regards to educating that group of individuals about all things Yuba City Fire Department. He is truly an asset, as are all our department heads are, but I thought he did a really good job. I think he's still on there. I see the JA. Attended a, a meeting on the cap-to-cap for public safety on that committee. This was the second of four meetings in regards to what is going to happen back in Washington, DC. Probably the biggest thing out there, some enhancements to upgrade 911 to facilitate not only telephone use, but, you know, texting and some of the emerging technologies. I want to thank Chief Baker and Chief Alexander for taking a look at the issue papers and providing feedback. They were, the committee was very pleased to get that feedback. Working on a project with the VFW, specifically Brock Bowen, on designating a couple highways here in Yuba City as part of the Purple Heart Trail. More to come on that. We, we will need to, to do some things, and I'm happy to say that Diana's helping with that project. The, the Merrimette Village, not only have we continued to meet on this Project Home Key application process, but we held a public meeting here last Tuesday night, and you want to cover it? You want me to cover it? Anyway, it was, it was really, I mean, it was very well attended. Merrimette Village, if you don't know, is a proposal for 217 units of affordable housing, not to be confused with a homeless shelter. This is a, a project that we still have to approve moving forward as a council, and then it'll still have to go for application through the state. The, the public seemed genuinely interested, for the most part. There was a couple folks that were concerned about our ability to, to serve it with fire, which they, fire's been involved since the beginning of the discussions on this particular project, and I know of no issues there. They were concerned about traffic, and on Walton Avenue, there was a lot of discussion about that. And one, one gentleman was very, very interested in us, instead of doing this project for us to, to bring a hospital to Yuba City. Obviously, Yuba City's not in the hospital business, but those were the comments, and I'm sure Vice Mayor Harris will talk. Couple things, I, I attended the human trafficking symposium at Yuba College, put on by Jenna McKay and, and others. One of the requests that came out of that from the panel, Scott Rounds was there, did a great job. If you get that back to him as well, Detective Scott Rounds, is a letter in support of Senate Bill 14, which is a human trafficking, which would increase the penalty for human trafficking. It actually was brought up by Senator Shannon Grove of Bakersfield area. And unbeknownst to me, the Public Safety Committee didn't move it forward last year. So if we can, if we can get a, a letter and take a look at that, I'd be happy to help with that and give that to consideration for council's potential approval and then send off in support. And the other thing that I want to mention is, you know, I attended a fundraiser for the Yuba City Canines, and many of you might be aware that are, that there is currently legislation being proposed at the state to, that would affect law enforcement's ability to use canines. And, you know, this is a tool for our officers, not, it's a non-lethal tool, as far as I know, anyway, that is not only good as far as officer safety, but it's also, you know, can de-escalate a situation. If you've ever seen the dog show up on a scene and quickly take control of, of a person not doing good things, I would hate to see our law, our law enforcement, our Yuba City Police Department's hands tied with their ability to utilize canines when it's, when it makes sense to do so. So again, this is something that's making its way through our state legislature down in Sacramento. I would like us to explore the ability to write a letter in support of keeping the canine mission as it is today. With that, thank you.
Thank you, councilman. Moving along to council member Biscali.
Thank you, mayor. You know, what have I been up to? I went, attended Waffle Wednesday at the senior center, and took a lady that I introduced to it, and it was very fruitful for the center. Went to my first meeting for Feather River Air Quality Control. We elected our officers, got a couple of reports about how we mitigate not getting fined because of the fires we have to show. Anyway, it was very, it was an engineer thing. It was very interesting, though, so make sure that our air quality control. They did mention a thing about having air quality, or quality air credits that are very, very valuable to bring industries that need those mitigating factors. I thought that was very interesting. I perked up when I heard that, because that's possibly an economic thing that we can entice people to come, because not every municipality or county or air quality control district has those, which I found very interesting. Went to the Bakai reception for the, I guess she's the queen or hostess? Hostess, very well attended. I knew the young lady, unbeknownst to me. I knew her parents and her as well. Very bright. She was sharp. She was sharp as a tack, like Councilman Harris was saying about young people. She, she had it down, and she's only a senior in high school, I believe. Yeah, she, she's definitely on her way to great things. This morning, I went to Read Across America at Bridge Street School. I had the great pleasure of reading to about 60 or 70 kindergarteners in three different classes of Dr. Seuss, because it's his holiday, or it's his birthday and such. And they put me through my paces on one of those books, I think it was The Fox in the Socks. What a tongue twister. I, I'd never dealt with that one before, but they were all engaged. It was great to see, you know, they're all, they were just all lit up. I had interactions with them. I do this a lot at our preschool, anyway, where I read to the kids, and it was, it was quite enjoyable. I really enjoyed myself. And with that, I will end my report.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Harris.
You know, it's interesting on the reading thing. I did substitute teaching today for kindergarten class in Linda, and they had me read a book of all things about hair. And so I got, I got to get a lot of harassment from five-year-olds about hair. Anyway, this is pretty short. I've been on vacation for a little bit, which was nice. But before I forget, I do concur with both your suggestions on letters of support, canine and human trafficking. It's unconscionable how that, the human trafficking especially, or both of them could even come and get any traction, but anti-human trafficking, it's amazing that people would not support that. Canine, like you said, not a lethal thing, not on purpose, anyway, and it's definitely just, I've seen it in action. All someone has to do is hear the dog, and that's it, sometimes. Anyway, so that's this thing. Again, as I mentioned, we've been doing the revenue ad hoc meetings. We've been working with Habitat for Humanity project on, on Walton. And as council member Boom Garden said, it was very well attended. We had a very good presentation by, by Habitat, some very insightful information, some clarification on, on the project. I think we're making some good progress on clarifying the folks that it's not a homeless community, it's a low-income facility that will help people and to kind of use it as a, as a step in the ladder to emerge from their precarious financial situation, and also prevent homelessness. So it's like this, almost like a purgatory, middle-of-the-road stuff where they're, yeah, they're getting help, but it's designed to be temporary to help them move up and out. Again, several more processes to go through before we see that to fruition. I'm very hopeful and that we can hopefully make that happen. Let's see, for as far as SECOG, I am on the Land Use Natural Resources Committee once again. We had a somewhat brief meeting talking about planning for scenarios and moving into the future of, for the region and the mega-region. They gave us, consultant gave us three possible scenarios, not necessarily a plan, a hard, fast plan that we're going to stick to, but just possible scenarios so we can adapt our approach as we, as we, as things emerge as far as traffic, housing, economic development and processes. One was continue current, which basically build wherever. It kind of creates, the word sprawl comes to my mind. Another scenario was in the middle of the road, kind of a balanced approach to infill and externally spreading out a little bit more. And the other one was a focus on infill primarily, which I like. It really had a good impact on, not only on open spaces and some quality of life issues, but it also had a positive impact on GHG emissions, which we're trying to focus on as well. And then lastly, I did on Friday, I went on a four-hour ride-along with our fire department, and was, it was very interesting, very, they, they were very accommodating. We had all, it was all medical-related calls, which is my intent because of our situation brewing regarding 911 and pre-hospital emergency medical care. Had a good chat with our firemen, got to ride in the back and do our, do our thing, and they, true professionals, and I appreciated their, their time and kind of interrupt their, the way they do business when there's none of councilmen looking at them. So, but they did a great job, and I remain very impressed with the way they do business. So thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to start by echoing the, the city manager and her recognition for our finance department. When I saw that, that I was very excited for you, sir. And I wish more people would have stayed in the room and heard that, because you guys, your department does an amazing job. So thank you once again. I had an opportunity to be on 93Q with Ashley Potocznik. Is that right? And she heads up our UCAN. It's, her title is Development Coordinator liaison. And so she got an opportunity to talk, talk about our program with UCAN, which is helping out local businesses, and she educated me, which I, I love that. I attended the BMLC reception at BLF Base. They are just now getting their honorary commander program back up and running, and that's where members of our law enforcement, specifically out of BLF Base, are paired up with people in the community, and we get to know them better by taking them out to dinner, whatever, getting to know them. And I participated before COVID. COVID kind of put the kibosh on that, and they're, they're bringing the, the program back, which is exciting. Tended the Bakai Hostess Reception, and also the Bakai Parade, 143rd. Tended the Bakai Hostess Reception and also the Bakai Parade, 143rd Parade. And that was exciting, a huge turnout, it was cold, but great turnout for that. And part of that was, I got to attend the Sister City Reception, which members of the Taiwanese delegation from San Francisco were there. And so that was, that was informational. From there, I went to the Moose Chili Cook-Off as a judge, that was fun. From there, I went to the Canine fundraiser and I echo what Councilman Boom Garden said. That is a program that we definitely need to support and continue to support. Kind of an ongoing meeting we're having is, it's kind of fall on Easter this year, is there's going to be a parade roughly right, right around where the Moose Lodge is. It's on Hain Avenue, there's a Sikh temple there that's putting on their second annual Sikh parade. And so the city and the county have been working very well, very closely together to make sure that that goes off without hitch. So thank you, city and county for doing that. And lastly, I would like to thank our fire chief for being proactive in making sure that the city, we are informed of these storms coming in this week. And of course, the concern is, we have this all-time snowpack, total, this, this record-breaking snowpack up in the hills. And we have another atmospheric river coming in. The concern is there might be some potentially flooding downstream. But the, the fire chief has been really proactive in making sure that we know what's going on. And I think the city's been pretty proactive in educating, letting the public know what's going on with that as well. And with that, we are adjourned.